Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, August 13th, 2013 Board of Education meeting. The Board has been in closed session since 6:00 PM this evening to discuss employment of employee, collective negotiations, property acquisitions/lease/purchase, pending litigation, and approval of the July 16th, 2013 closed session minutes. This evening, we have four Board members present, five Board members present, two absent. Put me back in third grade math. And let me start with the pledge of allegiance. Please join me.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, next, the best part of any Board meeting is student recognition. Doctor, Mr. Purnell?
Thank you. It's my privilege to welcome again Wendy Albert. Wendy has been up here before because her students are receiving awards, and tonight is no exception. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Wendy, and she can explain some more for students and their awards this evening.
All right. Thank you. My name is Wendy Albert. I'm the Department Chair for Family and Consumer Science at York High School. I'd like to thank the School Board and Superintendent Purnell for recognizing the accomplishments of our students this evening. I'd also like to thank our FCCLA advisors, as well as parents and families who have supported our students throughout the year. If I could have Kasia and Kaylee and Mrs. Merrick come join me up at the front of the room. If you guys will kind of come in the center here, facing the camera, so you can be on TV. And I did ask them to bring their projects. Usually when we have such our large group up here, we don't always get to see the actual projects that the students have done, so I asked them to bring those. Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America is a national student leadership organization which involves students enrolled in family and consumer science classes. Through FCCLA, students develop leadership and life skills such as planning, goal-setting, problem-solving, decision-making, and interpersonal communication skills necessary for success in the home, as well as skills for success in the workplace. At York, our FCCLA students are involved in a number of activities throughout the school year, and they also do various competitions for all of our different interest areas. The Students Bowl for you all competed in the regional and state-level competitions and advanced to the national competition, which took place in July in Nashville, Tennessee. In the interior design competition, students create interior design boards that meet specific client specifications. Their boards include scaled floor plans, elevation drawings, furnishings, samples of colors, and material swatches. This year's design problem involved creating a workspace in a row-style home in which a young artist could work out of. They were encouraged to pull in elements to reflect the client's time spent in Italy while maintaining a minimalist style. Students then pitched their designs to the judges at the competition, and they're scored on everything from the actual presentation to each of the elements that make up the design board, as well as how much of the client's specifications and the needs of the client are met. In the occupational category, we have Kasia Cordopassi, who received a gold medal. Kasia, wife?[237.62][237.62](applause) This is Kasia's second year competing. She has a true eye for design and creating beautiful floor plans and room elevations. The judges are consistently impressed with her professional explanation of her design process. We're sad to lose her, but excited that she leaves for Iowa State, and I think she said four days, and she will be studying interior design, so we're happy she's going on in the area. In the senior category, the team of Daisy Cano and Kaylee Schwartz received the silver medal. Unfortunately, Daisy is out of town and could not be with us, but Kaylee is here to showcase their award. Daisy and Kaylee were enrolled in the interior design class for the first time this past school year. They both demonstrated extremely hard work and the ability to consider judges' suggestions. Given it the regional and state competition, they worked really hard to involve some of those suggestions and to evolve their boards continually throughout the year. They're great designers, and since they are only juniors this year, we're hoping and excited to see them again this coming school year. I'd also like to take a moment to recognize their interior design teacher, Mrs. Merrick, who is in the center. She is also the FCCLA advisor for the design chapter and has coached the students through the development and refinement of their designs at each level of the competition. So it's been a lot of hard work for over the past year, but want to congratulate Mrs. Merrick and all of our FCCLA students on their accomplishments this year. Congratulations.[329.13][329.13](applause)
Last night at freshman night, when we welcomed the new students, and Mr. Collins had some excellent comments about how the community is stressed at York and how, in doing so, it creates an excellent environment for kids to develop and become who they are supposed to become. All the staff echoed with the words, "Get involved. It really makes a difference." And I think in these young people, we see that's proved. They've developed academically, socially, and so many levels, and have just become excellent young women, and we're very proud of them. So let me read the proclamation. Whereas York Community High School family consumer science students recently participated in STAR events, students taking action with recognition, at the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America's 2013 National Leadership Conference in Nashville, Tennessee. And whereas approximately 3,600 students advanced from the local, regional, and state level of STAR events to the national contest. Whereas on July 11th, the following York Community High School students earned medals in the national competition. Kasia Cordopassi, class of 2013, received a gold medal in the Interior Design Occupational Competition. And Kaylee Schwartz and Daisy Cano, class of 2015, received silver medals in the Team Interior Design Senior category. And whereas these accomplishments bring pride and prestige to York Community High School, to District 205, and to the community, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 express congratulations to these students, their parents and family consumer sciences department chair Wendy Albert, as well as teacher and advisor Sarah Merrick, for their outstanding achievements. Thank you.[468.53][468.53](applause)
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next student being honored is Matt Arnieri. Matt, if you want to come up. And Matt unfortunately didn't really bring samples of his project, but I did have him bring a picture, so he can make us all hungry. Matt is one of my restaurant management students. He also is an FCCLA student who competes in the culinary arts competition. But he's being honored this evening for a contest that he entered and won the grand prize for. This past year, a number of students at York became involved in the Kendall College Kendall Cooks Challenge, a recipe challenge open nationally to high school students hosted by Kendall College's School of Culinary Arts. So Kendall College is right downtown Chicago. After a fellow classmate won round two, Matt started to become really interested and excited to compete in the next round. He was like checking the internet daily to see if the new ingredients had been announced yet. So as soon as the secret ingredients of salmon, poblano peppers, and quinoa, which is a type of grain, were announced, he began doing all sorts of recipe research and looking at different cooking methods to try and determine how he could combine those ingredients into a unique dish. So his dish that you see here combined the techniques of roasting and stuffing the poblano pepper with quinoa that he cooked in the style of Spanish rice. He had then cubes of marinated and sauteed spicy salmon and sauteed vegetables that all got mixed together with the quinoa. And then he accompanied the dish with a poblano cream sauce and then a chipotle drizzle on top.[563.11][563.11](laughing) We were excited last spring to learn that his salmon stuffed pepper was announced as the round three winner, and even more thrilled this summer when we found out that his dish had been selected as the grand prize-winning recipe. In addition to the prize for winning round three, which was a very nice professional chef's knife kit, the grand prize package included participation in a week-long cooking camp downtown where the students get to go and they get to stay overnight. They're there for a week, and they get totally immersed in the world of culinary arts and hospitality management. I've heard a few stories, but looking to hearing some more. He also received a personalized chef's coat and will get to appear on a future episode of Kendall Cooks with Chef Cutkey, hopefully cooking his pepper recipe. I'm so proud of Matt's original, and I can also attest to a very delicious dish that he created and his accomplishments as the grand prize winner of the Kendall Cooks competition. I can't wait for him to bring all of that knowledge he gained and experiences from the culinary camp back to share with his fellow classmates, as he'll be returning as one of my leaders and advanced restaurant management students this coming school year. Congratulations, Matt.[636.66][636.66](applause)
Again, another remarkable kid doing remarkable things, and the community really supports you. Whereas in September 2012, Kendall College of Culinary Arts invited high school students across the US to develop their culinary skills through a series of four online interactive recipe competitions throughout the year. And whereas during each of the four rounds, students were introduced by video to three mystery ingredients from which they were to develop an original recipe. And whereas students then submitted their recipes and photos of their finished dishes, as well as explanations of why they chose their dishes, to Kendall's Facebook page, with a total of 75 students from across the country entered for a chance to win. Whereas on July 25th, 2013, Kendall College announced that York Community High School senior Matt Arnieri won the grand prize of the National Online 2013 Kendall Cooks Challenge Competition for his stuffed poblano peppers with spicy salmon and Spanish-style quinoa recipe. And whereas Matthew's prizes include attending attendance at a week-long Kendall College Culinary Camp -- try saying that again -- this summer, a personalized chef's coat, and an appearance on a future online episode of Kendall Cooks with Chef Cutkey. And whereas this accomplishment brings pride, prestige to York Community High School, to District 205, and to the community, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 express congratulations to this student, his parents and family and consumer sciences department chair Wendy Albert, for this outstanding achievement. Congratulations.[753.13][753.13](applause)
I have heard a lot of reactions from the Board on various presentations, but that one after the poblano pepper recipe was something different that I've never heard before. We need more dinner with the Board before these meetings, obviously.[772.82][772.82](laughing) I would also just like to take a few minutes and introduce two new administrators who have moved to different positions. And if they could stand up, I would like to introduce Melissa Couch, interim principal at Bryan, and Tom Heron, who is the interim assistant principal at Bryan this year. Welcome. We're excited that they took these interim positions and will do a great job for us, so I want to introduce them to the public this evening. Congratulations.[801.13][801.13](applause)
Next on our agenda is public comments. I don't have any of the little cards. If there are -- do we have -- if there is somebody in the audience that wants to speak, please come up. Say your name and your address.
Good evening. My name is Tina Mastro, and I reside at 654 South Hillside Avenue in Elmhurst. I'm here this evening because I'm a mother of two Bryan middle schoolers as of August 19th. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of my family and other much larger taxpaying families. For the past two years, I have inquired about the free bus service, in which we are legally entitled. I've been repeatedly told we don't meet the legal parameters for the state by several District 205 employees. This year, my response was declined via email from Mr. Thomas Heron, who also concurred with Mrs. Couch and Chris Welton. I then contacted Sinda Meneghetti, the State's Director of Pupil Transportation, and was advised of the chain of command should I not receive a resolution. My next step was emailing Mr. David Purnell twice last week requesting a resolution and reiterating the bus law from Chapter 22, Section 29.3. I was hoping for a timely response, but instead received no communication from Mr. Purnell. In addition to the obligatory bus service and the inconvenience of these past two years, I'm requesting the bus to stop at the Chael's Home, 666 Hillside Avenue. This home has three children, the home before that four, and the home next to that four. I requested this address not just for simplicity's sake, but so the kids who are involved in BOC, band orchestra, and chorus also get picked up there prior to the kids who start school on time. The kids with BOC shouldn't have to walk further in the dark due to safety reasons and the heavy backpacks. Furthermore, a proper resolution will allow many families less stress in the hectic mornings, many parents to stop manipulating their work schedules, and for some of us to return to the workforce after quitting for this primary reason. Lastly, it is the law that our children receive transportation to and from school that is 1.5 miles or further from the school. We are 1.55 miles away from school, and this was again validated to me today from Sinda Meneghetti, State Director of Pupil Transportation and Principal Consultant, Illinois Board of Education Funding and Disbursement Services. Kindly communicate this resolution to me by the end of this week, as school starts on August 19th. Sincerely, Tina Mastro.
Are there any other public comments? Next is superintendent's communication. Mr. Purnell?
Yes, we had three FOIA requests that were received during the last period from the previous Board meeting. One requesting information regarding contact information for specific individuals, parents, and records regarding the bilingual program. The contact information request was denied, the records request was granted. We also had one requesting for documents related to transportation bid, which we granted, and one request for information regarding the district's health insurance plan, that was also granted. Next item, Chris Welton would like to -- the next two items are Chris's, actually the next three, but we'll start with the budget. Chris would like to do two things tonight. He would like to recap this past year's budget year, highlight some of the things that occurred this year and where we ended up at the end of the year, and then he would like to do a presentation on the tentative 1314 school budget presentation for this evening. So with that, Chris?
So we have a recap for you of the 2012-13 fiscal year. These -- this is our normal monthly financial report, but our monthly and our books are kept on the cash basis of accounting, where the audited financial statements are on the modified accrual accounting. So you will have differences between these 2012-13 financials and the ones that the auditors will present probably in November, December. The auditors are in this week, and they are working closely with Helen Perez, our internal auditor, going through our financials in order to prepare the comprehensive annual financial report that will be presented in November, December. These financials are on the cash basis of accounting, and the cash basis of accounting can result in some timing differences that occur as opposed to the accrual basis of accounting. So -- and that had a lot to do with the results of the fiscal year. And the fiscal year turned out better than expected. And on the revenue side, in particularly the property taxes here, we had budgeted for the Elmhurst Hospital tax-exempt refund to occur in June of the fiscal year. It has not occurred to date. Right now, our best estimate is that it will be incurred in the September financials. The county has told me that it is being held up right now at the state level at the Department of Revenue, so it has not hit our financials yet, and that is why you'll see in the property taxes line that it came -- our revenues came in 3.2% more than budget. The CPPRT, that's replacement taxes, those also came in better than budget, and those replacement taxes usually fluctuate with the economy. The other items on the revenue side that I wanted to point out, the state of Illinois also was able to catch up on the categorical funding. And so we received five quarterly payments instead of the budgeted four categorical quarterly payments. And so you would see in the state categorical programs, 127% of budget, and that was due to a timing issue. Similar situation with the federal grants. Our largest federal grant is the idea flow-through grant, and we received about $517,000 more than budget, which really is a timing where we received some of last year's grant and most of this year's grant in fiscal year 2012-13. David, if you would please go to page five. And on the expenditure side...
Chris, before you move there, I just want to highlight for the Board and the public, the $3 million from the hospital that we have reserved is really not money that we can access. And so it appears as an inflation factor to the bottom line in our revenues, but really, you really need to take $3 million out of that. And although it looks like we have a very healthy fund equity, $3 million of that is committed. We know we are all likelihood going to get that bill. Chris, we have no indication that we're not going to get billed that money back to the...
No, I mean, we believe we will have to pay a refund back, and right now, our best estimate will be that it will happen at the September property taxes.
And we are still going to be committed to interest rate and interest factor.
Interest at the CPI rate, which is more than we can earn on our investments.
So we would really urge publicly that we resolve this as soon as possible, because this is costing us funding. This is costing us money. We are paying interest on this. The longer this goes on, the more interest we're going to pay, and if we're -- if the courts have said we owe this, then we're hoping this gets resolved, so.
Thank you. And then on the expenditure side, the operating funds were -- finished the year at 99% of budget. So 1% under budget on the expenditure side. And we had some positions during the school year that were budgeted and went unfilled, and that helped keep salaries expenditures under budget. Substitute costs were more than budget. We had more long-term absences than expected in 2012-13. We had a premium holiday in December. This helped to keep the benefit expenditures down. The premium holiday was -- we were allowed to -- we had adequate reserves in the self-insurance fund in order to provide a premium holiday in December, and that helped to keep the benefits down. Our unemployment costs were lower than expected, and we're going to budget -- we budgeted in the tentative budget a smaller budget amount for unemployment costs. Natural gas expenditures were less than budget, and they were less than the last few years due to lower rates. The transportation cost is one area that spiked up in 2012-13. We had a new contract. We were required to go out to bid. The previous contract was very competitive, and those companies were probably losing money, because when we went out to bid, we did have a much -- a big increase in those transportation contracts. And as you can see on the expenditure line for purchase services in the transportation fund, we spent 115% of budget, and it was a 33.6% increase over last year. And the transportation fund really took a hit this year, where you see that it's -- the whole fund itself on the expenditure side was at 111.7% of budget and 29.4% more than the prior year. Electricity came in under budget and was only 1.4% higher than the previous year, 2011-12. We're going to lower that budget again, or we already did, in the tentative budget for 1314. The special education tuition accounts came in on track with budget, only slightly overbudgeted, and they were 3.9% lower than the previous school year. David, if you could go to page seven. As far as the fund balances are concerned, as Dave was pointing out, the operating funds had an annual surplus on the cash basis of $5.3 million, and that inflated the ending fund balance to $37,926,389, which is 37.56% of fund balance as a percentage of annual expenditures. But that amount is inflated by the $3 million for the hospital refund. And then, David, if you would go to the final page, this is, which is 17. This is the page that we look at certain accounts that vary from year to year, where it shows the substitute lines are finished over budget and over the prior year. The legal fees were over budget and 2.8% over the prior year. The natural gas, this is the line that shows that we were well under the $500,000 budget in this line. So we spent $325,000 on natural gas compared to the previous year of 363 and 379 from two years ago. Unemployment, that line also very, very much under budget. And then the tuition lines there and electricity, I already touched on all of those, but I just thought I would show that analysis. So that is really all I wanted to point out about the 2012-13 fiscal year.
Any questions for Mr. Welton? John?
When you subtract from the fund balance, the...
This is the page that we look at certain accounts that vary from year to year, where it shows the substitute lines are finished over budget and over the prior year. The legal fees were over budget and 2.8% over the prior year. The natural gas, this is the line that shows that we were well under the $500,000 budget in this line. So, we spent $325,000 on natural gas compared to the previous year of 363 and 379 from two years ago. Unemployment, that's, that line also very, very much under budget. And then, the tuition lines there and electricity, I already touched on all of those, but I just thought I would show that analysis. So, that is really all I wanted to point out about the 2012-13 fiscal year.
Any questions for Mr. Welton? John?
When you subtract from the fund balance the amount that we've been holding and reserved for the hospital tax refund, where does the fund balance show up as a percentage of budget?
I don't have that handy, but I think it's around 33-34%.
$100 million, that's 37 million.
If 37.9 million is 37.56%, it's basically about a percent per million, it's about $100 million expense base. So, if you take three off of that, it takes it to 34 and a half.
And our policy is 20...
26 minimum, somewhere in the low 30s.
26 is the minimum, is what it says.
Okay. Based on the experience of this year and the low cash point, do you think that's something that needs adjusted, that some of the assumptions might be changing in some way?
When we looked at the PMA projections, we thought that the 27% would be a better minimum than 26. So, yes, I would feel a little more comfortable with a 27% minimum fund balance level.
Chris?
As Chris pointed out earlier, the difficulty is these cash basis versus accrual basis accounting, which basically makes it very difficult to kind of draw straight lines between year to year to year as far as what the actual ongoing operating expenses are. I think the important point here, a couple of them that I'd like to make is, while it shows a surplus of 5.3, as Chris pointed out, 3 million of that was an EMH refund that we had budgeted. A million of it was a timing payment from the state that were catching up, that in some prior year, I'm guessing, was a negative number within the budget when they elected not to pass. So, that we were catching up there. And then, a million of it was some of the IDEA and CCPRT. So, in many cases, timing slash one-time kind of items. So, if you subtract those out, you end up with a break-even budget or somewhere around there. The other thing I'd like to point out is that, you know, a million dollars is a 1%. I mean, we're a hundred-plus million-dollar organization, and, you know, if we were running a surplus of a million dollars, it would mean that we had a 1% cushion within our budget. So, while it's a big number and it's an important number to us, you know, I think being in the red or black by a million dollars is a pretty good management if you're within 1% of what your budget was. So, you know, I think I'd like to point that out, too, just to make sure that, you know, it doesn't look like this 5 million is, you know, is a windfall, because it's not. And, you know, we have $26 million worth of capital projects that we have endeavoring to figure out how to fund and, you know, many other areas to invest in. So, I just wanted to kind of point out that there are a number of one-time factors that were, that were in here that I think when you get the accrual, modified accrual basis, will be adjusted out. The hospital will be reserved for that. The fund balance will be, the operating fund balance will change there. The income statement will change for that. So, I just want to kind of make sure that that's clear.
Thank you. Anything else? It's pretty easy.
I agree with Chris on that. And one further thing, I focus the financials, the monthly financials, on the operating funds. And we also, in the non-operating funds, in 2013, we had issued a, a bond issue for life safety. And that amount was a little over $1 million. So, the life safety fund balance was increased during the year. And then, so, I want to transition into a summer projects update.
Chris, before you proceed, can you remind me again, Chris Bloom, you just said this number, the life safety issues that have been identified that have to be resolved over the next 10 years totals to, is it 26 million roughly?
Those were capital projects, not just life safety.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, about the capital projects, that repairs that need to be done to our buildings over the next 10 years. 26 million, is that right? 20 million?
No, but we did some in summer.
Well, I mean, roughly. I was just looking at a rough number.
When that was presented back when Frank put it in front of us, if you added it all up without Lincoln, it was, it was $26 million over the next 10 years.
And then, with the extra million that we just borrowed from the markets this year, that account, Chris Welton, is, has how much in it roughly?
I believe...
2 million, 3 million?
2 million bucks. Because we borrowed that money to pay for a portion of that 26.
Right, right.
And...
So, at the end of 2012-13, the capital projects had 1.9 million, and the life safety had about 2 million.
Okay, so roughly $4 million.
Roughly 4 million.
Okay. And then, all right, for 26 million worth of projects, okay.
In the pool roof alone, we just spent a million and a half of that?
And I was about to...
All right, yeah, I'm sorry.
All right, now, continue where you were. I just want to clarify that.
So, I would like to go to the item on the summer projects. I would like that narrative, yes. Yes, please. And the biggest project we have going on this summer is related to the York High School Aquatic Center. And the roof, the steel roof was 25 years old, and it's reached the end of its useful life. We had corrosion due to water penetration that had been compromised with the skylights and the light fixtures. We've had some leaks in the pool that have resulted in significant water loss over the last two years. The project is coming along on time and on budget. The new roof is expected to last at least 25 years, if not longer. The beams and trims in the aquatic center have been changed to York green. I don't know if you've been there, but they are currently blue. The, we're having new LED lighting. The skylights are being removed, and the lighting will be better. It'll be more evenly dispersed. And we're fixing those pool leaks, and it's progressing on time. It's still, it's not going to be ready for the start of school, but early September is the estimated completion date on the York High School aquatic project. When we get into the budget, that project was budgeted like 1.2 to 1.5 million dollars, but $1,087,000 or so was from that life safety bond issue that we issued in 2012-13. We also, this summer, we did middle school gym lockers, so all three, Bryan, Churchville, and Sandberg. And we took a tour of a couple of the buildings today. The new lockers look great, and they were done midsummer, so those are completed. The Bryan and Churchville are getting new bleachers. Those are, that project is actually, the bulk of the work is happening this weekend, Sunday, actually. The punch list will be done on Monday, and so, they should be ready to go on Tuesday. So, the second day of school, we should have new bleachers for Bryan and Churchville. The new bleachers are ADA compliant. But it was a real tough timeline. We really worked on the bleacher company to try and get it as soon as possible. Early in the process, they were telling us mid to late September, so we kept pushing, 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 trying to get these bleachers installed for the start of school. Our maintenance team, in-house staff, did some new walls and doors at Churchville, Edison, Jackson, Lincoln, and Madison to provide secure vestibules at the main entrances. The doors and the hardware are still being installed this week. The drywall's all completed, but those, they're nearing completion, and we plan on having them completed for the start of school. We have additional security cameras at Field, Bryan, Sandberg, and Jefferson, and those are also supposed to be done by the end of the week. Maybe next week. But work is ongoing on these additional security cameras. The Madison courtyard, our grounds crew and summer crew removed existing vegetation, saving and relocating when possible from the courtyard. The maintenance department added additional drainage, water supply, and an electrical feed for a future fountain. We have an outside group that is arranging for the landscaping of the new outdoor classroom at Madison. And Emerson, we had, our staff worked on a big project related to storm drainage. And the, this project will increase the size and capacity of the system and should reduce the frequency of water incursions into the building during heavy rains. We also feel that this new structure is going to be more kid-friendly or safe to be around this, the way the new structure is built. And then, the final project we had this summer, our larger project, was the York Transitional Life Skills Improvement, where they widened the doors to 42 inches for easier access to larger wheelchairs and assistive devices. The counters have all been lowered to ADA height, and the appliances have been replaced with those more appropriate for use by students in wheelchairs. And that work will also be completed for the start of school. The summer projects, the York Aquatic Center was primarily out of the life safety fund, but some of the project was also funded out of the capital projects fund. And the middle school lockers and bleachers were out of the capital projects fund. And so, those are, that's where we're at with the summer projects. But a lot of, a lot of that work was done out of non-operating funds.
Any questions? Chris?
Would you add Field to that list? The water main?
Oh, yes.
You want to talk about that?
We had a water main break at Field, and that, so, and as a result, we had, I don't know how many inches, maybe three inches of water in the lower level of Field. And this has been submitted as a claim to our property insurance for reimbursement. And so, in order to fix that, they had to dig out and repair the broken water main. And that project is ongoing, and we're expecting to have water, drinkable water by Friday. We're going to have water tomorrow, I believe, to the building. But, so, the water will be ready to go for the start of school. But that was a larger plumbing project where we hired an outside plumber to come, to come work on that.
There is a caveat with that. There is a possibility slim, but we have to have the water tested by the city. The cities ask us to spend two days testing the water. That will all likely happen Thursday and Friday. 95% of the time, I am told, the water testing passes, and there's no problem. But there is, however, the 5% chance it won't. We have notified Field parents that there is a slight possibility that if, in fact, we don't pass that test, we cannot open school on Monday. So, we've alerted the Field parents just to make sure that they have that on their radar. Again, we're not anticipating that, but Chris and I were there today. They are still in the process of finishing the water main into the building. We believe that'll be up and running tonight. They have to flush the system, then they have to chlorinate it, and then the city comes in and tests. So, it's going to be, it is a little tight. And if it doesn't pass, the city is telling us they're going to need two or three more days to then go back and do it. So, we would be virtually not being able to occupy that building until Wednesday or Thursday. So, just, we don't think that's going to happen, but just for full disclosure, there is that slight possibility that it doesn't totally pass. And obviously, safety issue with the students. We don't want students there if we're not 100% sure water is safe.
And Chris, how much, if the insurance doesn't, I mean, you're going to submit a claim, but the cost of doing this was, my understanding was over 100,000?
I don't have the number for you tonight, but I could get that for you.
It is over 100,000, though.
Yeah, so, I mean, the point is, is when we're looking at numbers here and magnitude and things like that, this is one, this is one event that was 100,000 plus that was unforeseen within the budget. So, when we talk about cushions and then the importance of having some cushion there, things like this that are important.
Karen?
Yeah, and I just wanted to clarify, you know, Chris, from your 2013-14 summer projects update, those were planned...
Oh, yes.
...projects. The Field water main break was unexpected to Mr. Bloom's point, but just so that people understand, there's...
That's right.
...there's other things that come up unexpected, but you were trying to cover those planned summer projects that required the entire summer, and they were the high-cost items.
Yes. Thank you.
And I do want to thank Frank and his crew, especially at Field, because that number would have been much larger, but they came in, cleaned it up, replaced tile, did a lot of the stuff internal. The cost is really for boring back in a new water main, putting it into the building and up back in the building. That's a very costly process to do, and we have to bore from the street to the building. And so, as you can imagine, it's by the foot, and it's very expensive. And it's a good six-inch water main that goes into that building.
So, Dave, we had April and then the summer where Field basement was flooded, that the maintenance crew, once again, Frank Shu and his team, were cleaning that out, and supplies, equipment was lost?
You know, we were fortunate. It flooded, and we caught it early, so it didn't get down. The big cause last time was the library. It did not get down to the library to any extent that it did the last time. There's a slope, and it didn't quite get there. The crew was there taking up the water before it got down there. So, and then, the city was able to shut off the main, which sometimes is a problem, but they were able to shut off the main at that time. So, the damage was somewhat minimal. We just put down new tile. We had to replace the new tile again. We had some cabinet work that we had to redo, but overall, not anywhere near as extensive No other questions? You're on the issue budget.
So, the next item is the tentative budget for fiscal year 2013 and 14. Tonight, we, the board will adopt, or it is for vote tonight, to adopt the tentative budget and authorize the administration to place the budget on display for 30 days prior to September 24th. And then, the district also directs the administration to publish, to publish a notice of public hearing, and we will have that public hearing on September 24th, when the final budget will be before the board. Between the tentative budget and the final budget, we will have more accurate information as far as salary and benefits. We're in the, the human resource department is very busy with filling vacancies and hiring. And so, in this budget, which we, we had to cut off the, where we were in employee management two or three weeks ago, and even since then, we've been hiring. And so, we'll have more accurate information as far as salary and benefits for the final budget. We'll have more accurate information from the state as far as general state aid and replacement taxes and some other state grants. So, there will be some minor modifications that occur between the tentative and the final final budget. Yes, this is the page I wanted. Thank you, David. This is probably the best picture of our overall tentative budget. And if you look at the far-right column, that's the grand total, which includes the operating and the non-operating funds, which totals 116,855,905. We have total expenditures, grand total, meaning operating and non-operating, of 118,974,029, which results in a net loss of, or deficit of, 2,118,124. But that is both operating and non-operating. And the non-operating is where we are paying for a lot of those projects that I just talked about, the Life Safety Fund at $1,087,537 is the pool project. And then, in the Capital Projects Fund, we had a lot of the expenditures for more of the pool, along with the bleachers and the lockers. And the debt service fund is just our principal and interest on our debt. On the revenue side, we do that other source, $1,425 is transfer from the Education Fund, which is the technology leases that we pay out of debt service, so we transfer that money over. And then, we also transfer from the Operation and Maintenance Fund, the amount of money to pay the principal and interest on the debt certificates for the State, York Stadium, and the Administration Center. So, those really show you what's going on in the non-operating. But the $1,087 was the Life Safety Bond issue we issued in 1213, and now we used it for the pool project in 1314. But on the operating, from an operation standpoint, we did break even or actually had a little bit of a small surplus. It's, for all intents and purposes, a break even with operating revenues of 105,989,976 and operating expenditures of 105,933,760. And you see at the bottom here, we finished the year with a operating fund balance as a percentage of operating expenditures at 35.86%. And in this, we did budget the hospital refund to be coming out of the property taxes. So, this does have the hospital refund coming out of the operating funds. So, David, if you could go to the next page, we will talk about revenues and property taxes. As I said, it shows a 1.4% change, but that includes the hospital refund coming out of the revenues in 2013-14. And the property tax line is made up of the June collection, which is the 2013 extension, which was based on a 1.7% CPI, and a 0.8% new construction. That's just an estimate. We won't know that until April. And then, the September collection was based on the 3% CPI. So, that is the property taxes. Replacement taxes, also, we have a 3.6% increase. That is an estimate. It's an estimate. We'll have a better number for you when we have the final budget in September. Interest income, it shows a 4.3% change, but it's really negligible. It's a very small amount of money that we earn in interest, about 25 basis points. So, even though it shows an increase, it's a very small amount of money. Instructional fees are up 4.4%. We had increased the textbook fee, and that was related to the new social studies adoption that occurred this year. And then, you'll see a big increase there in other local revenues. That is the TIF surplus distribution of 1,39,400. That helped us to balance this budget was that large surplus, TIF surplus distribution. General state aid and other, it's showing down 9.9%, but that's comparing to actual, which last year's actual was, we had those timing differences where we received more revenue than, more than one year's worth of revenue. And so, that's why we have decreases both in state and federal revenue. So, that's really all I had on the revenue side. If we go to the next page, we have expenditures. And we're showing a 6% increase in salaries. And that's a combination of the salary increases and the staffing increases, where we have 22.4 additional full-time certified positions in the budget and 14.3 additional special education assistants. And we have a 1.0 additional York Special Education Supervisor. So, that, along with the salary increases, where the salary increases were budgeted at a CPI of 3% or below for next year.
The benefit line... Just so there's no confusion, just the Special Education Supervisor at York, it appears now as an increase in staffing. That's due to the fact that we were contracting that position out over the last couple of years for retired administrators. So, that was a contract service. That comes out of the contract service side of the budget, and now we have hired somebody to take that position. So, that's why it appears as a staffing increase, but it's a position that has been there.
And then, on the benefit side, we're showing a 12.3% increase. The main reason for the big increase, other than the additional staffing, is that in 1213, we did have the premium holiday, which we have not budgeted a premium holiday in The PPO, as you know, was better than, below trend again, and had a flat increase, no increase on the PPO plan. The HMO plan had an increase of 11%, and the dental plan was at a 3.6%. The other big thing in benefits is the IMRF employer rates. They finally, for calendar year 14, decreased a little bit, but still, the fiscal year 2013-14 is more than the fiscal year 1213 by 6.4% in the IMRF fund. Purchase Services is up 5.6%. We had some big increases in liability insurance and workers' compensation insurance. The transportation line is relatively flat because we had a three-year contract with both bus companies, and this is the second of the three years, and it is a flat as far as rates for the transportation. However, with the school choice, we will have additional transportation costs, and that is why we are reflecting a 2.3% increase in transportation. The nurse contract is another purchase service. This line reflects a 4% increase. Those are the larger, oh, and also in the Operation and Maintenance Fund, when we have repairs or maintenance, so we budgeted a higher amount there just in case we have some purchase services that we have a need for hiring contractors to come in and do a repair. So, that also impacted purchase services. The supply line shows a 16% increase. That is mainly due to textbook adoptions. The capital outlay and the non-capital outlay equipment show decreases. Those are just really the cycle of technology purchasing. We do plan for, as David Smith has shown in his technology plan, an increase in the 14-15 budget for technology. Tuition, we are budgeting less for tuition in fiscal year 1314. It was 2.4 million last year. We're budgeting 2.2 million in 1314. And then, if you go to the next slide, David? Yes, please. Just in fund balances, as we already talked about, we are at 37,098,2605 is what we are budgeting or estimating to be at the end of fiscal year 1314, which is a 35.86% of annual, 35.86% fund balance as a percentage of annual expenditures. And it's very important that we have adequate reserves with the state of, in order to make it through our low cash flow months in April and May, and also just providing more cushion with the future or potential future negative financial changes with the state or federal government, with the possible pension shift, just all the uncertainties out there. So, our plan is, after we do the final budget, would be to have PMA do five-year projections shortly after, maybe, we're hoping, we're shooting for October, to have PMA back to do some five-year projections. So, we'll get a better indication of the future finances. The tentative budget will be on display on our website and also in the district office. That's really all I have.
Any questions? John?
I want to thank you and Dave and all your staff for the work in getting to this point, having sat on the Finance Committee up until May. None of this is surprising, and it's all understandable to me, and I appreciate all you've done to empower the board and to explain it and to bring decisions to the board, to the extent that community input is required to set direction on things. There are no surprises here. We've watched this coming on. The changes have been brought to us immediately. The only thing, or the other thing I'd like to point out is there's a wealth of information in the documents that are attached to this agenda item. And for those who want to dig deep and want to dive into the data and see why we are where we are, the things that are being described here, I think the information is all out there, and I invite people to look closely at it. One thing will come out when people look at the staffing analysis, and I think it was back in, I think, February, when we first went into this, Dave, about the FTE increases of certified. In the staffing analysis, there's an upgrade. Maybe, I wonder if those could be summarized for the people present here, because I think that's a crucial point, the things that were attempted. I note that although there's an increase, a significant increase, 22.40 of certified staff, the salary amount is not significantly higher than you would expect for that sort of staffing increase, and I think that's a credit for the way you've managed things. But if you could explain that large FTE increase or relative large increase?
Well, first of all, if you remember, when we presented the staffing increases for this coming school year in January,
January.
We were projecting 17 additional certified staff. We are now projecting 22. A lot of things have changed since then. Probably, the biggest one is school choice, and I'm going to talk about that in a minute, but school choice, because of that, we had to add staff to Jefferson in order to accommodate students that were requesting school choice as of this moment in time. We also were working with the Fisher staff, and that staffing issue, there was an increase there of one FTE in order to accommodate and come up with a joint resolution to the Fisher staffing issue that has come before the board in the last couple of months. And then, a couple others, what you always can predict is, in some of the elementary schools, because of our target, our target at grade levels, if you go over a target, because you have an increase in one grade level, you're forced to add a staff. And that happened at Lincoln, was one of the buildings that increased. And Brad, was there another one?
We also ended up increasing at Edison recently as well.
Oh, that's right. Fourth grade at Edison and a, was it third grade, third grade at Lincoln, I believe. So, those two plus three because of school of choice. So, that was really the increase in certified staff that you're seeing above the 17 that we had projected, I believe.
The other factor is that when you increase a section at the elementary, you have that FTE that's very obvious, that we go from a three sections of third grade to four sections of third grade. But the piece that is not obvious is that we have been staffing our specials at the elementary school very, very tight. So, when we increase a section at the elementary, we sometimes end up having to add points of FTE to art, to music, to physical education, to world language, that end up making what looks like a one FTE increase, sometimes end up appearing as something like a 1.4 FTE increase, and that, again, continues to add to those pieces. And, you know, we have made a very conscious effort to make sure that our special staff at the elementaries are very tightly staffed, and because of that, there's the trickle-down effect that it's more difficult to absorb the extra section into those schedules.
But I also want to point out, and I want to thank my administrative team, if you look at revenues versus expenditures, you know, we're almost breaking even. I think it's things like that that we have become more efficient at, at the last couple of years, that we just don't automatically add staff. We try to work the problem, see if there are creative ways to staff, especially with specials, because if you start staffing and not paying attention to that, you can increase those certified staff numbers very quickly, and that has not happened. And I want to point out, Connie Chester's in the audience. Connie is a whiz at figuring out these special schedules. We all sit there in amazement, but she's been really great at working the numbers, how we can shift staff to make it more efficient, and it has really paid off in what you see. But there are still increases. As Brad said, you increase an elementary teacher, you're increasing specials, you're increasing a lot of other things. So, that's part of the effect also.
If I recall the discussion in January, I said February, but January, it was that these were just maintenance changes. These were just addressing things that were put to us to give the same services to what were dealt. It didn't deal with the strategic changes that would make the education better from a strategic standpoint, or I'm probably not using the right terminology, but the things that you would do if you could make some changes to the way that things are delivered. And I think those are
And I think those are things we've got to keep, keep in mind. It's great that the budget's balanced, but we've got to keep looking forward.
Yeah, again, all of our increases that you see tonight are maintenance items. There's nothing that addresses strategic planning, innovation, changes in learning and classroom delivery, that may make a change in student achievement. It's strictly, and that's what we talked about last year, maintenance budget to come in to maintain where we are, so that we can maintain the district on a long-term basis. And that's where we are.
I guess I would like to point out that this is not a break-even budget. It's a break-even budget if you look at just operating accounts, but we're spending two million dollars on capital projects. These are things we have to do. You can't run an organization as large as this without investing in infrastructure, and those are real costs that come out. So we spend a lot of time talking about the people, which are the most important part of this, but without the infrastructure, we can't operate. So I look at the budget and I look at two million dollars kind of negative. We're spending some fund balance within those capital funds. We used a one-time TIF windfall in order to balance the operating side of the budget. We could have just as easily have put that into the capital side of it, which would then have shown a million dollar deficit in capital and a million dollar deficit within the operating side, just to maintain, as Mr. Purno pointed out. So I think that when we're talking about this as break-even, I think that we need to start to work to put our capital and our operating budget back together when we talk about the entire organization. So I just don't want to mislead folks in thinking that we've got a break-even budget here. I think that, you know, we have an operating break-even piece, but there's a big part of that that we're not talking about if we say break-even in that context. The second piece is, which is somewhat striking is, you know, given that the operating side is, you know, showing a flat, the balance at the end of the year within our operating funds is the same, about thirty-six million dollars. But because our expenses are rising, that percentage now has dropped two percent. So doing nothing but running something flat within the operating fund takes that fund bounce from thirty-seven to thirty-five. So, you know, over time, again, if you're running maintenance, flat maintenance budgets with a healthy fund balance, the fund balance as a percentage of expenses will continue to decline over time. So that's something we have to keep an eye on. You know, we can't look at that and say everything's wonderful right now and just stop there. I think, and as Mr. Welton pointed out, we're going to be looking at the five-year projections and kind of where that leads us to from a fund balance perspective. So I just wanted to highlight that as well.
Shannon?
For the PMA projections, does PMA use this budget? Or do you have more, can we have more input into those projections, talking about our capital expenditures? Things in the future that aren't on this budget that we need, that are coming down the pike? I feel like PMA doesn't give me a clear picture, because there's more to it. There's more expenses that are coming than what they're projecting. So how can we, can you, can you work with them to add more? Or is it a formula there? I don't really know how they, how their program works, but it seems like we need to do something a little bit different than last year with them.
Yeah, it's a good point. PMA generally does focus on the operating funds. I'm not sure how we get our arms wrapped around the maintenance of our facilities over a long term. But we definitely are, we work with them on the assumptions that go into the five-year projections. Their base year will be the final budget, and they will have all of our staffing information. But it is focused more on the operating funds.
All right, thank you. I just want to take this opportunity and just, I referred to it a minute ago, but just to go into a little more detail on the ELL program in the district, specifically at Fisher, and then school of choice and where we are with all of that. Let me start with Fisher and the ELL program. Thanks to Charles and his staff and Jane Bailey and her staff, there were a number of meetings that we held to look at all of the information that we had on our bilingual program, our ELL program at Fisher and across the district. Charles had his staff contact some people at the state who were retired but who were division chair people, to make sure we were interpreting the guidelines correctly for ELL, which we, it turned out we did. And so, but working together and working through a number of scenarios, we were able to come to a staffing model that I think the Fisher staff is supportive of and satisfied with and meets the needs of all of the students at Fisher, which was the bottom line for us. We didn't, we wanted to make sure that all of the students, bilingual students, English-speaking students, that everyone's needs were being addressed. And I think we've come up with a model that can do that this coming year. We did add a resource teacher to the building, a bilingual resource teacher, and that was, with discussions from Fisher, we felt it was needed for a couple of reasons. In the third and fourth grade, we have a number of students that are transitioning out. We think that's a model that can give them support as they transition out of the bilingual program, but doesn't put them in a bilingual classroom. Again, they can transition out into an English-speaking, predominantly English-speaking classroom, but with bilingual support. The other thing the resource teacher can do is work with our teachers at Fisher to create a really good bilingual program model. And that was voiced by the staff that, as we met, that they were feeling like they needed added support to understand just how a bilingual program in the classroom would look like. How much percentage of time do you address bilingual issues, English in Spanish and in English? How would that model look like? So we think it's a real additive model for Fisher to really have somebody who, and it's a teacher who knows the staff, who has worked with bilingual students, who can really give the teachers the support that it sounded like they were looking for. So as I referred to, though, that was an added FTE to Fisher, but I think it resolved a lot of problems that were concerns by Fisher and the community that were voiced. So we believe we were, are within the guidelines for the state on our bilingual program. In all likelihood, we'll probably be audited this year, so we'll probably know for sure sometime this year how close we are to the mark or not. But we believe it was an equitable solution, and again, thanking Charles and his staff and everybody involved, I sat in on a number of meetings and worked through the problem. So, and I think indicative tonight, there's no parental concerns that show up here this evening, so. And we did it, you know, so we could get the class lists out across the district by Friday. That was another, you know, because we're starting school. So that was another big issue. School of choice, if you remember, and I know the board knows this, but federal guidelines state that within fourteen days of the start of school, you have to identify any school that has made AYP based on the data that you have at that time. And so what we were doing was, we were looking at all of the data that we got from achievement testing. We looked at the formula that the state had used in the previous years to ascertain which school, how many schools made AYP. And at that point, Jefferson was the one school that we knew would make AYP based on that criteria. Jefferson was identified as a school of choice for Fisher students and parents. They have a deadline that we're looking at for tomorrow, because obviously we are virtually two or three days away from the start of school. We have lots of arrangements to make. We have busing issues. We have, students have to be assigned to teachers at Jefferson. So we are really working very hard, all of the staff, to get those numbers in. Right now, we have less than twenty-five that have requested transfer to Jefferson. So we are making arrangements for a bus to take those students to Jefferson at that time. That number may change by tomorrow, but I think we're going to be pretty close to that number. And right now, we can accommodate all of those students at Jefferson who have requested school of choice to Jefferson. We did add a fifth grade to Jefferson in order to accommodate those students. We are also probably looking at another kindergarten section in the morning. We'll make that determination tomorrow, once we have final numbers from school of choice. But that's probably another section that we'll add to Jefferson. But they have the space in having that done. The other development that has happened just today is, we heard from the Illinois School Board, and they have now tentatively published their AYP schools, schools that made AYP in the state. And it seems to indicate that we have more than Jefferson that made AYP. We started looking at that and trying to figure out why that happened, because we were pretty confident that at this point Jefferson was the only school that made AYP. And it appears that the state has made a decision to change the criteria this year of defining AYP in the state of Illinois. There's two things they seem to have done. They have changed what is called a confidence interval, which is applied to the formula for determining AYP. At, the confidence interval was ninety-five percent. It appears now it's seventy-five percent. That is a big swing in the difference. The other thing they have done is they have redesigned what is called safe harbor. And the combination of those two things, it appears that more than Jefferson, which is good news for us, more than one school has made AYP, but it's puzzling for me that we have raised the criteria in the state of Illinois with great fanfare, that we were raising the ISAT cutoff, because we wanted it more rigorous, we wanted to reflect more college-bound. And then at the same time, when we get to this formula, they are, seem to be manipulating the formula so that more schools make AYP. I'm puzzled, and we did not know this was coming. There didn't seem to be a whole lot of indication that the formula was going to change this year. So we are still trying to find out what that formula means. But now, good news, we'll probably have more than just Jefferson make AYP this coming year. And so we'll move forward. Again, though, it's not going to change school of choice at this point. We had to declare Jefferson as the school of choice fourteen days in advance. We did that, and we can accommodate, we believe, all the students that are school of choice. So that is kind of an update of where we are right now. Tomorrow, we will start making final decisions on placing those students at Jefferson. We have been talking today about busing, looking at where those students live and how we might efficiently. But again, this is all cost increases. So when we talk about school of choice, this was not resource neutral for our school district. We are going to spend more money on staffing, more money on busing for school of choice. So. Any questions from the board on that? Shannon, go ahead.
I have a question about the English Language Learner Program. We need a district-wide bilingual program. So the, having the resource teacher at Fisher this year, that will start developing that program, and then we can transfer that knowledge to different schools, to have a district-wide curriculum?
That's what we're trying to do. We think we need a district-wide curriculum, so that when we create a bilingual program, it's the same across the district. It's not just for one school, that we're duplicating that service across the district. So yes, this might be a model. We'll look at it this year, see how effective it is. But it may be a model that as we move forward and as we get more bilingual students in some of our other schools, we duplicate that model. I know, Charles, if you...
Dave, you're a hundred percent accurate. There has to be a singular model that you apply across the district. The difference in our district is that we don't have the same population at the other seven elementary schools. But we're, at the end of this year, we'll evaluate the structure that we've put in place and see if it is a feasible model for as demographics continue to shift in the community.
Just one bit of clarification. When we talk about that, we're saying once again that the need is at the elementary level, because if we do this, the elementary level, then they transition into the middle school and perform as expected, right?
Exactly right. Research in abundance shows that when students have a strong language development program, bilingual language development program in K through five, that their academic performance and their language, and their language skills in middle school will be stronger. So we hope to strengthen the program, reduce the, kind of the demand that we see for support and intervention at the middle school level.
And also, you know, as we look at this bilingual program, which is relatively new for us right this year, or, you know, the way that we're implementing it this year, and with the school of choice, it becomes more difficult to Dave's point of, you know, it's not at a zero, you know, sum game here. It's making sure that we're measuring all the different elements that we're implementing, or programs, if you will, or requirements from the federal or state government, and making sure that we're getting the return or the results, which is about our students and about education. So, you know, just so that people understand, it gets really complicated and adds a lot more complexity to an already complex situation. Otherwise, you don't know what works, what doesn't, you know, what inter- relationships break down and how to resolve them efficiently.
And I think part of this was just, as you said, Karen, I think there are a lot of moving parts to this, and there's still a lot of moving parts to this. School of choice has an effect, the program has an effect, the ELL staffing has an effect. So that was the real difficulty, is getting all the pieces together to come up with a model that we think is going to be effective. We have to wait and see if it's going to be effective. You know, is a resource teacher in that kind of, with that kind of definition effective in what we're trying to accomplish? And so that's, that's what we have to find out. And before we adopt it as a district-wide model, we want to make sure it's effective. So we're going to be looking at it. The other thing that may happen, just the other caveat, as we go down the road, if we become more and more diverse, sometimes what happens is the students don't always move in just at the elementary level. They start moving in at middle school and high school. That would affect the program too. We would have to then look at a middle school program that may not look like an elementary program. It may look different, but the possibility is, you're going to have a lot more students moving in, in their middle school years, that don't have languages, English as a primary language, and that'll affect a different model. That's, it's just like the early childhood. It's a little different model than at the elementary, and then there'll be a different model at the middle school and a different model at the high school. So it's kind of building the plane as it flies.
Dave, if I can add one comment, just adding on to what you just said. You know, we've, we've gone through an enormous amount of time, effort, and expense to comply with the federal No Child Left Behind law, the state-mandated English Language Learner law. And I am very curious, after all this is finished, if complying with all this has provided our children with a better education or just a more expensive education. So the soonest we can determine that, I'll be curious as to what the answer is.
Well, and the other issue is, again, educators at the local level are not making the decisions on this. It's driven by something else. So the, it begs the question, for the amount of money we are spending for all of this, was there a better model that we could have came up with internally without the guidelines that would have met the needs? We weren't given that option, so.
Yeah, I'd just like to add, I mean, Dave, to your comment about, about making AYP and not making AYP. What troubles me about that most of all is, is that you end up splitting the school district. There are some schools that made it, there are some schools that didn't. The fact of the matter is, is a lot of it's demographic-driven. We have some great schools in Elmhurst. I would hate that one area of town looks at another area of town and says that we made it and you didn't, because I would argue that Fisher is one of the best schools we have in the system. I'm also disappointed that what it does is it takes resources away from helping those subgroups the way the calculation is made, in order to comply with a law that, to Jim's point, may or may not actually impact student outcomes. And it's just, it's just a shame that we're going through all of this staff time and all of this expense, and the resources that's taking out of the classroom where it belongs is very tough. But I also want to make sure, just that, when those headlines hit about what make, who made AYP and who didn't, that is not a reflection about what's a good school in Elmhurst and what isn't a good school in Elmhurst, because we have some great schools in Elmhurst, and our job is to make sure that every kid gets an education at every school in this town, so.
Yeah, people need to keep that in mind. There are so many factors that make up AYP, even with the changing of the formula in the state of Illinois for whatever reason. There, at one point, I think, I heard there were two hundred and fifty ways you could fail to make AYP because of all the subgroups, all the configurations and all of that. And remember, the criteria now is ninety-two and a half percent proficiency. When I went to school, ninety-two and a half percent was an A, and now we're calling ninety-two and a half percent a failure. You know, it's a really high bar to start calling schools failure, and like you said, I think Fisher is one of the really better schools, not only in this district, but across a lot of districts, and to say... And to say they're failing just doesn't reflect what they're building's about, so.
Wanted to add a little bit more about AYP, too. It all comes from No Child Left Behind. And now we have 44 states that have gotten a waiver from this bad legislation, and Illinois is one of the last remaining without the waiver. And I just read in the Chicago Tribune, it says, whoever the writer is in the Tribune talks about, you know, not letting Illinois off the hook because we didn't move fast enough to install teacher evaluation systems based on student academic growth. Well, neither did the other states that got the waiver, like Maryland. You know, so there's a lot of their states that didn't move fast enough with their teacher evaluation system with academic growth that, you know, has the waiver. So it just makes zero sense. You know, different states are being treated differently, but we're stuck dealing with the, you know, school of choice and all this, you know, AYP, who made it, who didn't, when a lot of states, most states don't even have to deal with this anymore.
Shannon, if I can add to that. My understanding is also that the federal government has now gone so far as to grant a waiver to certain counties within California. Certain districts within California that all banded together and applied for their own waiver. So if I can encourage our administrators to, through whatever professional organizations, through whatever is the most logical organization, to encourage them to get school districts in Illinois together, excellent school districts like ours, and apply for a waiver on our own. So that we can be, so that we can focus on delivering a great education to our students and not complying with laws that just add expense and not quality of education. So I'm sure there's an appropriate organization that could take that to Washington. So, thank you.
That's everything for Superintendent Communication this evening.
Next on the agenda is the approval of board meeting minutes from the July 16th meeting. Are there any changes to those minutes?
I have one.
Okay. We'll give you a second, don't worry.
Right on the page, but this has to do with when we talked about the spaces available at Jefferson. There's a number, Ellen, 82, there were 82 spots open at Jefferson, and I think it said there were 82 at-risk kids at Fisher. Yeah, it was 82 available spots at Jefferson. I don't know the page.
All right, so with that one correction, we'll let the rest of those minutes stand as is, given that one correction. Next is Board Committee reports. Only one in our summer break here, only one committee met since our last board meeting, and that is curriculum and instruction.
We talked about the first two agenda items already, which was the ELL and school of choice program. So we also talked about the annual work plan. We came to no resolution. We were presented with a draft work plan for the upcoming year for the committee. And I think we need to have some more discussion about that, on what topics should come directly to the board, what topics should, are best to have started discussion in committee and then brought to the board after a few iterations. So we're still working on that, and there's nothing, nothing to show the board yet. Long-term curriculum resource planning. This is the start of a project where Charles is working on the cost for curriculum that will keep no curriculum older than six years. So we'd have fresh curriculum, and then what technology goes with that curriculum, what professional development we need, what building-based technology support we need. We talked about the Curricular Technology Committee. So there are a lot of pieces. It's not just about having fresh curriculum. There's a lot of pieces that go into that and cost. So we looked at a conceptual plan going out to 2019. And what I'd like to do is have Charles try to finish that conceptual plan, put some numbers around some of these ideas, and then start feeding that into, you know, the finance committee or the board, or however we want to work this. But it's planning our curriculum for the future, and that's not included in what we saw tonight. So we need to start planning. We can't do a maintenance budget year after year. We have to start investing in this curriculum and instruction and take our district to the next level. You know, it will get us to one-to-one. If that's the route we want to go, it will, it will make teachers more versatile and, you know, we need, we need to have the appropriate professional development. So that's all in the conceptual stage. Is there anything you want to add about that?
I think that adequately covers it. We're looking at six to seven years, trying to build out a plan that will make sure our students are getting the same quality education, using advanced technology that districts all around us will be having at about the same point. So keeping pace with our colleagues, with other students in the immediate area.
Last thing we talked about was foundation planning, and in September 16th or 18th? One or the other, okay. The board will meet with the District 205 Foundation, and we want to have some ideas in our back pocket of some of the fundraising goals that we might have. And the first thing we need to do is look, the Charles group is going to look back at the NOVA projects, go back to the middle schools and ask about the effectiveness of the NOVAs, you know, interview some teachers and see, you know, how that program went. Do they need more? Do they, do they not have enough? Should we look for a different project? Do we need to look at the elementary school, what an equivalent NOVA device would be at the elementary schools? So we want to be ready to talk to the foundation mid-September, but we need some feedback first from, from the project that we worked on last year with the foundation. Anything else?
Any questions?
So to that end, though, as we look at the future planning every six years, making sure that the curriculum instruction is up to date and using integration of technology and delivery to the classroom, professional development, et cetera, we actually may be organically growing the bigger picture, heavy hitters or high-impact items at the foundation and we can partner with for fundraising, is kind of what I envision. Is that what you all are envisioning? Okay. Secondly, with the technology, I'm sorry...
Curriculum technology?
Curriculum, yeah. I thought you were going to start to have board members attend those meetings. Is that starting this year, or are we doing that rotation, or is it too premature?
I'm not sure we got to the stage that we were conceiving of a rotation. We started it last spring. The Curricular Technology Committee meets three times a year, and we're, got a lot on our plates the week, the few days before school starts. So we haven't put that on our agenda yet for a call together.
So just to be determined. Okay. Great, thanks, Shannon.
Chris?
Charles, quick question. So we're talking about developing kind of a five-to-six, seven-year plan on keeping curriculum fresh. How does that dovetail with the kind of lighthouse district stuff we're talking about? I mean, is it a piece of, that we build on, or, I mean, I just, my concern is that we have a bunch of different initiatives going on, doing similar things that create work. And I just want to make sure that they're integrated.
Certainly, we want to be integrated, too, and see what kind of savings and opportunities we can find by looking across different channels for opportunities for synergies. In terms of technology, as an easy example, I think that as we develop our capacity to create our own materials and use technology for the delivery of those materials, we'll have more flexibility and agility, make some decisions, whether we go for a fairly progressive model, a very, very innovative model. If we have digital content, digital delivery systems, we'll be more able to do that. Certainly, at the higher ed level, you see that there's been great inroads made in terms of digital delivery of content and instruction, really kind of changing the way education looks at the university level. And to a degree, at the post-university level, too, when people go back for additional credentialing, the impact or the role of digital instruction is huge. And we know that's coming in our direction. Districts all around us are implementing it now or testing it now. So I really see it as an agility factor, and enables us to move in any number of directions. The amount of investment that we have in textbooks is large. As Chris pointed out, there's an increase in this year, and that really isn't, really not at a full swing yet in terms of what the annual cost of textbooks will be. I'm hopeful that we can find savings by having our staff become proficient editors of digital content, so we're not constantly buying textbooks, which, the six-year-old social studies textbook is a pretty old textbook. And if we move to digital content, we can get away from that problem.
I think the other thing is, you know, what we're putting together is really a model that was lacking, which is just an understanding that we're going to have a plan to review curriculum. As you start bringing innovative ideas about classroom practice or the structure of schools, as you move that model forward, you're going to infuse those kind of innovations within that curriculum adoption as you move forward. It's not going to happen overnight, and as a matter of fact, all the research says you got to go slow. When you do an innovation, you know, go slow to go fast. So you have to introduce that slowly, but then it takes on, if people buy in, it takes on a direction that doesn't disrupt the whole system. So I think you need what Dr. Johns has put together, which is a clear six-year plan on how we're going to innovate the curriculum, but then adding to that the other structures and the other innovation that match that as you move forward. So this piece is, has been badly lacking, I think, and I think it's going to serve the district well, moving forward that this is how we adopt curriculum, and then bring those elements in as we move forward. So I think it dovetails pretty well.
So if I play this back for you, at the risk of the wrong metaphor, but with Dave Smith, we're spending $3 million on building some pipes and the technology side to give us the capability to innovate in the technology side. This is building the pipes on the curriculum side to give us the ability to innovate. So it's not in and of itself innovative, but it gives us the capability to do it. Okay.
Okay. John?
And I think, well, this avoids the need to call it off the consent agenda, but item F is an item in the consent agenda that is an incremental step in doing some of the things. It bases, based on some of the best practices, based on a pilot year of looking at different things, it tries to look forward and do some things in, integrated with the curriculum. Not articulating this very well, but it was a great discussion at the committee that showed how that was intended to go.
Anything else? Because you provided me with a tremendous segue to the consent agenda. Shannon's got one more.
Under tentative budget, I mean, maybe we can talk about this at the next meeting since it's getting late, but there was Meg's report on student services that we didn't discuss. Do we have any comments on this? Because that was a big report. I mean, I did. But maybe...
Shannon, that was in reference to whether, if there are questions about the increase in aides that Chris referenced.
Oh.
So that was basically just background information.
For aides, okay. Okay.
But Shannon, to your point, we had talked about having a discussion at the board table about student services, more global discussion. So I just want to make sure that, I guess, building on what you're saying, Shannon, is we're still going to have that at some point in time.
And, yeah, we can certainly schedule that in. So. Okay. Back to John's segue. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. Items A through M, which includes the standard personnel report and financial reports, acceptance and posting of the 2014 tentative budget that we heard about tonight, approval of telephone and email notification system contract, approval of a small fee increase for breakfast and lunches, approval, as we just spoke about, to purchase Google Chromebooks, Chrome management licenses, and cases and cards that go with to trial them, approval to re-market surplus technology equipment, approval of revision to policy 4:15, identity protection, that's a first reading, approval of revision to policy 4:170, safety, that's a first reading, approval of revision to policy 5:50, drug and alcohol-free workplace, first reading again, approval of revision to policy 5:260, student teachers, first reading, policy 6: 240, field trips, first reading, and finally, revision to policy 8:20, community use of school facilities, first reading there as well. And all those have had revisions to the wording within the existing policies. Would anyone, well, first of all, can I have a motion for the consent agenda, please?
I move that we approve the superintendent's consent agenda, items A through M, as mentioned.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Any items to be removed? Hearing none. We have a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda, items A through M, by Karen, seconded by John. And I believe we need a roll call vote on this, please.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell is absent. Mrs. Bastido is absent. Mr. Collins?
Yes. So we have five yes, two absent, no nos. The consent agenda passes as proposed. And then we also have another action item off the superintendent's agenda, the approval of a new policy, 4:171, school safety and security video surveillance. This is also a first reading of this policy. So if I can have a motion.
And just a reminder to the board, this is not on consent because this is a new policy, it's not a revision. Thank you.
Okay. I move that the Board of Education accept as a first reading new policy number 4:171, school safety and security, video surveillance, which will become effective at the time of its adoption and subsequently be added to the policy manual of the Board of Education, Section 4, operational services.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Okay. Moved by Karen, seconded by John. Any discussion of this policy?
Did you discuss this at the policy meeting? Okay, so I'll address it to you. The 30 days, is that typical to keep the video for 30 days? It seems very short. I'm just wondering, is this from, taken from other schools? You know, from benchmarking what other schools have for video surveillance?
Yeah, it's fairly common, the 30-day, and actually, the way this is proposed is that we would not keep video longer than 30 days. Only, would we keep it longer than 30 days if it was a video that was being held for a specific purpose, you know, for a specific action or, the wording's in the policy. But basically, when in the 30-day, no later than 30, or, yeah, when we hit the 30-day interval, we would be overwriting that tape, and we would not keep it. It's not tape, it's digital, but we would overwrite that recording. It's not tape, it's digital, but we would overwrite that recording. And there, and I think the idea there is that we're not having videos lingering for long periods of time, that people might be able to access and review, that we would, we would keep them no longer than 30 days.
Thirty days, the superintendent or authorized personnel can determine a longer preservation. There's, it's, it's a very low standard if, you know, the superintendent determines that, you know, certain needs aren't being met, or the relevance of it may not appear within 30 days, they can keep it longer based on a reasonableness standard, so.
Okay, anything else? All right. An approval of new policy four colon 171, motion on the floor. All in favor?
All aye.
Opposed? Five yeses, motion passes. Next is a review of upcoming meetings, and we have several. All occur in this building, in this room. Tuesday, August 20th, the Finance and Operations Committee meeting at 6:30 PM. Wednesday, August 28th, is a special Board of Education meeting at 6:00 PM, and that will be a closed session meeting. Wednesday, September 4th, Curriculum Instruction Committee meeting at 7:00 PM. Monday, September 9th, Board Improvement Committee meeting at 7:00 PM. And finally, Tuesday, September 10th, our regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting at 7:30 PM. Next on the agenda is the action item on our, one of our closed session items tonight, which is the successful negotiation and reaching a new contract with our custodial union. Mrs. Stufen?
I move that the Board of Education approve the 2013-2016 agreement between the Board of Education and the SEIU, Local 73 Maintenance and Custodial Bargaining Unit, as presented.
Do I hear a second?
All second.
Thank you. Moved by Mrs. Stufen, seconded by Mrs. Ebner. Any discussion? Can I, can I ask Brad, can I ask you to say a few, just a few things? You're one of the main negotiators of this contract on behalf of the board, and we appreciate your and Mr. Welton's efforts to what sounds like a mutually agreeable and very, you know, lacked any drama in the negotiation. So, we do appreciate your efforts. So, if you could just talk a little bit about it, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you. I would like to start by saying that this, this process, or this negotiations, was a very positive process for all parties, I believe. We utilized interest-based bargaining to be able to look at potential issues or concerns that either side had, and problem-solve as to ways that we could address those issues or concerns that would be mutually beneficial for both parties. This process, I think, allowed us to add some depth to some of our relationships, both within the administrative group, but also in looking at the custodial, the relationship that, that administrators have with the custodial union as well. We were able to work on several pieces in the contract. A couple of them are encouraging, a positively encouraging better attendance, a more productive and efficient workday, increased expectations for employee and administrative communication and collaboration, and finally, we were able to tie cost of living increases directly to the CPI for, in the years in which we receive the funds through taxes. Overall, it's a three-year agreement that I think is a very positive one for both the custodial maintenance union, but also for the district.
Thank you. Any, oh, go ahead.
Just want to add one thing. Today and tomorrow, Chris and I are walking through all of our facilities before the start of school, and I think Chris will agree with this. We were in all, we went through six buildings today, seven buildings today, and I will tell you, they are, they are sparkling. The floors are highly polished, things are ready to go, and sometimes, that takes a lot of work from our custodians to hit, hit this deadline, especially when they have a lot of summer activities. And in every building we were in today, they were ready to start school virtually tomorrow, and they, the facilities really looked well. They had done a lot of painting, they had a lot, strip floors, they had done a lot of moving of furniture in some cases, and so I just want to recognize the custodial staff and the maintenance and operations staff for doing that. You know, we were kind of impressed by what we saw today. We'll continue that tour tomorrow, but, you know, well-deserved that, our custodians really do a great job.
I agree. I think we have a very dedicated and diligent group within our custodians and maintenance workers. With that said, do we need a roll call vote on this, Mrs. Walsh? I believe we do. Okay, so, Mrs. Walsh, please.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Bastido is absent. Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell is absent. Mr. Collins?
Yes. So, that's five ayes, two absences, no nays. The contract is ratified. Next is board communications. Anyone have anything to discuss? Hearing nothing, then we are at the end of our agenda and having no more items on our agenda. I declare this meeting closed.